So then now at this part of our day, we're moving into our Committee of the Whole meeting. We have an agenda that's in front of everyone and probably our guests. Call this meeting to order at, I'm not sure what time, but close to quarter after 10:00. But seeing there, is there any decoration of bikini or inches with the members with regards to the Committee of the Whole agenda? Okay, if one does arise, you can then fill out the proper paperwork. At this time, we have a notice of motion that's presented to us. Counselor Desai, are you moving this notice of motion?
Yes, yes, Mr. Warden, I do want to move the motion, but I would like to make a change to it. I would like to add a clause at the end that reads, "That staff be authorized to proceed with the actions of this motion prior to ratification, prior to council ratification pursuant to section 25.6b of the procedural bylaw 5003-18."
You overruled me. Do I have a second or for Counsel Millen? Okay, so Counselor Desai, you have the floor. This is your notice of motion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The ruling from the World Trade Organization is expected within the next couple of months, which is why I wanted to add that last clause to that motion. It is important that we pass that today, and it is important that we get it out to all the relevant parties today. In passing this motion, Mr. Warden, we would be showing support for all the wineries and cideries that have begun to thrive in our individual municipalities. These wineries and cideries are local businesses owned by local people who in turn hire other local people and businesses. In closing, Mr. Warden, wineries and cideries are an integral part of our vibrant Gray County economy. They are agricultural producers, they are also agricultural consumers. In addition to that, Mr. Warden, they are a major player in our tourism sector as their tourist destination, sorry. As such, Mr. Warden, I do hope, to a certain point, I do expect that this motion would pass this chambers with unanimous support, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counsel Desai, and I would think it probably tastes good, too. Counsel Millen, do you have anything to add as a secondor? Okay, so the motion is on the floor. Are there, is there any discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. So we have a delegation at 10:45, but we're a little bit before that, so we'll move on with your permission on to items on the agenda. Consent agenda, are there any of those items wished to be polled? I guess through your mic. Want that polled? Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we poll item A and item E. Okay? And we'll come back to that later on the agenda. Okay, moving on then for items to be discussed. Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the ones that weren't polled, I need a mover and a secondor, please. Counselor Hicks, Deputy Warden, and Counsel Burley. Any, no, we don't have discussion on items there, we just pass, right? All in favor? That's carried. All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So items for discussion then is with regards to the first report, PDR CW 1720. Can I have a mover and a secondor for that, please? Counselor Mackey, have a secondor? Counselor McKeevey? Okay, Scott, you're going to talk about the first report. Floor is yours.
Great, thanks, Warden Hicks and members of the Committee of the Whole. Oh, sorry, Warden McQueen, my apologies. I don't know what I was reading. So I'm up here today presenting this report to you, but there was a significant input into this report by a number of other staff member, including but not limited to our CAO and our Director of Planning, so I'm just the one chatting with you today. So it's no secret to members around this horseshoe that Gray County is growing, and our communities across the county are growing at different rates, but we are seeing development interest and growth in all of our municipalities. And the very nature of planning is thinking ahead and looking ahead to what our needs are, both from a land perspective, but also helping work with your municipal staff and councils to look at what our infrastructure needs are going ahead, all with the goal of supporting growth and economic development across the county. And we know that we want to be ready for when there's that interest rather than reacting once we have a knock on the door. And this growth can be a fantastic opportunity, but it can also create challenges across the county and throughout the member municipalities. When the county did our official plan, our Recolor Gray official plan, we also did a growth management strategy in 2018 to look at what the projected growth needs are across the county. And at that time in 2018, the consultant, along with input from municipal and county staff, noted that we had enough land to meet our growth needs in the immediate future. But there was a strong caution from the consultant, which was staff, of course, took heed to, that this is a snapshot in time, and we know that things are changing very quickly, and we need to continue to monitor this growth and continue to monitor the land supply that's available and the infrastructure levels that are available to meet those needs. And since then, and even prior to then, we've had interest from certain landowners and also certain municipalities with respect to future growth lands, some of those being within their current municipalities, and some particularly from some of the landowner's perspective, also being on the edge of a municipal boundary or on the edge of a settlementary boundary. And as we were starting to get these individual requests, staff thought it prudent to take a step back and look at this in a comprehensive fashion and start to think about what this means for the entire county in terms of making sure we're prepared for the development that's coming our way. The provincial policy statement, both in the 2014 version that's currently in effect and the 2020 version, tasks upper-tier municipalities with this coordination of development interests and also looking at population projections and growth allocations in that regard. And so we wanted to have a brief discussion with council today about what we need to think about moving forward there and where we see perhaps some opportunities and challenges. And in the report, we've listed a number of scenarios, and it's probably not even limited to this, including development along the Hanover and West Gray boundary, development along the southern tips of West Gray and South Gate, along the Mount Forest boundary, development in Collingwood and Blue Mountains, development in Georgian Bluffs and Owen Sound, and the list sort of goes on. But these are all potentially opportunities, but they also have the potential to create challenges or in extreme cases even conflict between landowners or between municipalities in this regard. And staff really see some of these boundaries as an opportunity to promote discussion and promote collaboration, hopefully between municipalities and working with development interests in that regard. We've got lots of great collaboration already going on across the county, and there's numerous examples of municipalities sharing services. There's other examples where municipalities own land or infrastructure in their neighboring municipality. So there's lots of examples we can point to as potential solutions for a path forward. We're cognizant that there's some of these challenges and issues that won't be simple, and they will take a lot of discussions between staff and between municipalities and landowners. But we wanted to at least start researching some of these issues and looking at some paths forward here that can hopefully explore win-win opportunities. I think too often in the past, and this isn't unique to Gray County, where we've got development that's spanning municipal boundaries, it can be tasked as a win-lose scenario, i.e. one municipality gets the growth and therefore they get the assessment, and they're the winners, and by the nature of that equation, the other municipality is the losers. We certainly don't see it that way, and we see an opportunity for Gray County as a whole to prosper and to really promote ourselves as being shovel-ready, if you will, for future growth challenges, because we know that once it's at our doorstep, there's a lot of other processes that need to take place, including environmental assessments and servicing expansions and various other things. So we can't wait until there's that interest. We have to be proactive in planning ahead there. We're also cognizant that there's opportunities for individual businesses that might be already situated along a municipal boundary, and should they want to expand, what does that look like? Do we suddenly say to that business, "Hey, that's great that you want to expand, just give us three years to get our house in order and then we'll talk to you," kind of thing? So again, it's about being proactive and looking at opportunities between municipalities. So what we're proposing through this report is that staff look at doing some research in this regard, and that research will be chatting with our friends from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. It will be looking at how other municipalities across the province have been dealing with this, exploring what different opportunities could be. In some cases, it might be shared services; in other cases, there might be some sort of swap between municipalities, whether it's a land swap or some other type. We want to look at further refining and monitoring our current projected growth rates, and of course, we want to chat with the municipalities around the horseshoe here. And in some cases, it may even involve chatting with municipalities outside of the Gray County boundary whereby there's an interest in growth in that regard. What we were thinking with committees, blessing of course, is that we do some research here and we start to open up these discussions, and then we bring a report back to this committee summarizing the findings and some recommendations for next step. We're certainly not thinking that this next report will solve everything, but hopefully it will provide the Committee of the Whole a work plan moving forward should we decide to go down that route. And there may be some municipalities whereby these discussions are more urgent than others, some where growth is happening quicker, but we do want to involve all parties in that regard. So the recommendation here is that the committee receive this report, that we share it with member municipalities as a way to start those discussions, and that we begin working on this research and those discussions, and that that future report come back. So that's what I have for now, but certainly open to any discussions if there are any.
So thanks, Scott. Just before I go to questions, any timeframe of going out and coming back, like a year or?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I haven't discussed this with other staff. We're thinking these initial discussions shouldn't need to take too long, so we're hopeful that it could certainly be less than a year, but I certainly don't want to make promises that it will be done in a month or two, so maybe somewhere between three months to a year, but hopefully on the shorter side of that.
I guess as long as you allow lots of time for conversation, that's the most important thing. Counsel Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, thank you, Scott, for the report and your colleagues. I like your thoughts of a couple months, because this shouldn't come as any surprise to anybody that this issue arises. I hear it on a regular basis from developers down our way. They inquire about crossing boundaries, and the response they get is, "Well, golly, that's going to take some time." Our residents, as we all know, don't care where the line is. They get their services where they need them. And I think it's high time that we get on this horse and rode this puppy down the road to get some answers so that our staff can say to the developers, "Well, here is what we need to do, and here's how long it's going to take." So I have no doubt that the great minds in our planning department can sort this out in good timing and to the benefit of all of us. So I look forward to the report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Millen. Is there other conversation? Counsel Potter?
Thank you, Warden, through you. We already deal with a lot of shared services in Blue Mountains. One of the things that we're realizing is that we need to look at this from the education from, in terms of school accommodation. So are we going to include boards of education in this program?
Scott?
That's a great comment. Thank you for that. Yeah, we can certainly open up those lines of discussion, and I know staff in our planning department and other departments have already been working, in the case of Town of Blue Mountains, with town staff to start to open those discussions with boards of education. So I'll make a note of that, and we can include the boards going forward.
Madam CEO?
And just to add to Scott's comment, we do have the Blue Water Board and the Catholic Board both provide an opportunity every year for the county and our member municipalities at Bruce County to come forward and to present to them kind of a status on what's happening in the development world and what's happening across our communities and where we see, you know, population growth happening and that. So I think this kind of work can only help to enrich those conversations.
And they certainly may definitely want to be involved, too, for sure. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Scott. All in favor of the report? That's carried. Okay, thank you. Going on to our next one. We'll do one more, maybe we'll take, what do you want? Take a break, yeah. Okay, so the next item is PDR CW 1820. I need a mover and a secondor for this report. Counsel Burley, Counsel Potter, oh, okay, come on up. Welcome.
The presentation's just not on the... Sorry, yeah, there should be a presentation, it's just not on the computer.
Maybe we should take a break. I guess when we have a motion on the floor, we can. Can we? Can we take a recess? How's that work? No, we can't, we can't. So just hang in there, we'll just get this figured out here.
Guys, thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council. The following is a proposed information report for a plan of subdivision titled 42T-2019-03, also known as 61 Alfred Street West in the town of Thornbury, in the town of the Blue Mountains. The subject lands are in green on the bottom end of that map. The local Thornbury Community Center is located in red. The sports field along Alfred Street is located in blue, and the remaining lands surrounding that property are residential. And again, it's in the town of Thornbury. The subject lands are legally described as part of lots 1-3, registered plan number 105. The following is a proposed lot plan for the subdivision. Please note on this plan here, there are nine total lots, but through part lot control, they'll be further subdivided, and there will be a total of 15 units for this subdivision. Proposed plan of subdivision would create 15 total units, four semi-detached units, five single detached dwelling units, and six townhouse units. The units will connect onto Victoria Street South via cul-de-sac. Servicing will be municipal water and sewer. The proposed subdivision also requires a zoning bylaw amendment to the town of the Blue Mountains, and the application has been received, recently circulated, to receive public input and agency input. County staff recently attended a development review committee meeting with town staff at the town of the Blue Mountains. We met with planning, engineering, recreation, and trails and fire staff, along with the agent and the applicant's engineering staff. The following were some of the matters discussed at this meeting. Had to do with snow removal, lot density provisions as part of our new Recolor Gray official plan. The proposal as it is today would require two additional units to meet our lot density requirements. We also talked about sidewalk and trail connections, fire access, servicing, and drainage. A public meeting has not yet been scheduled for this application, but it is anticipated to take place in late April or early May. And based on staff's review, county staff are recommending that committee receive the following report for a plan of subdivision 42T-2019-03 for information, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks for that then, Stephanie. Any questions to the report that's been presented? All right, it's quite a bunch today. All in favor? That's carried. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back.
Welcome back everyone. And so councillor Body and deputy warden Hicks are going to go over to Georgian College for a few minutes to do that presentation, or receive that presentation, and we'll be back shortly. But at this time on our agenda, we're moving now to our 10:45 delegation at 10:50. Sarah Shinstone-Harris is going to speak to us about climate change and all the great stuffs around that. So I'm going to pass it over to you.
Great, thank you very much. So yes, I'm Sarah Shinstone-Harris. I'm part of ICLI Canada. It's an international organization. We're actually the largest association of local governments focusing on sustainability in the world, although ICLI Canada just focuses on Canadian local governments, and we're based in Toronto. So I'm joined here today with, by my colleague Hiba Kareem, who will be joining me in a minute to go through some activities. So I'm going to talk about climate change and the role of local governments in the fight against climate change, and some of the benefits that we can achieve through developing a climate change action plan. And then we'll talk specifically about Gray County's climate action plan, and then want to hear from you. So why I'm actually here today is to get your input and thoughts on this plan, so that, you know, what your, your input can be considered throughout the plan process. So I'm going to talk for about 10 minutes. And you'll see, and then we'll do the activity for 30 minutes after that or so. So you'll see in front of you some postcards, and we'll go through an activity in a minute, and I'll give you all the instructions, but I want to start, I want you to start thinking about this activity once we get there. So the activity is postcards from the future. So you're going to write yourself a postcard from the future to now, or a friend or a family member, about kind of what, describing Gray County in the future, assuming that this plan is tremendously successful and we're achieving our sustainability and climate goals. So as I'm speaking, kind of think about what your, what your, what your vision is for, for climate and sustainability, specifically for Gray County. So quickly going to talk about climate change, just as a refresher. So the sun radiates heat, which comes down to earth. Some of that heat escapes back into space, but some of it is trapped by the atmosphere, which, which makes the atmosphere, or the earth, warm and comfortable and habitable for us. So this heat trapping ability of the atmosphere is called the greenhouse gas effect. However, since the industrial revolution, we've been burning carbon, and that carbon's been going into the atmosphere and kind of increasing this heat trapping ability of the atmosphere, which means less heat from the sun can escape back into space, and the earth is getting warmer and warmer. This is causing climate change. So we're already seeing impacts of climate change. The frequency of natural disasters has increased significantly over the last few decades, so more hurricanes, more floods, more tornadoes, more wildfires, more severe storms, and we're expecting this to continue to increase. The cost of climate change is also increasing, so we've seen a 20-fold increase in annual insurance disaster claims, as, claims as a result of climate change, weather and severe events. So that's a huge increase from the 1970s, and we're expecting it again to continue increasing. And these impacts will affect Gray County and already have been. So we've already been seeing more extreme weather events, more flooding, more ice storms, and we're going to continue to see these sort of effects. We're also going to see more increased pests and invasive species. And then we're going to see hotter, drier summers, more heat waves, more droughts, things like that. And all of these will affect our infrastructure, our roads, our buildings. It'll affect agriculture industry, our access to food, tourism industry, and all of this. So of course, we really need to take action on climate change. So when we think about climate change, there's kind of two directions we can take. We can look at adaptation, so adapting to the impacts of climate change, so things like flood protection. Or we can look at mitigation, so looking at mitigating the effect, the, the causes of climate change, or looking to reduce emissions. These are both very important parts of the climate change work, but for this plan, we're going to be focusing more specifically on mitigation. We'll, we'll want to identify and look at adaptation co-benefits and things like that, but we're primarily focusing on mitigation, so on reducing emissions. So things like energy-efficient houses, active transportation, electric vehicles, renewable energy, things like that. So in 2016, Canada ratified the Climate Paris Accord, or Paris Climate Accord, pledging to keep temperatures below two degrees a century, so that's kind of the, the safe threshold that experts say we shouldn't pass. In order to meet this commitment, the federal government, as well as the Ontario government, pledged to keep, or committed to reducing emissions by 30% by 2030. Internationally, the IPCC, the International Panel on Climate Change, suggests that we need to reduce emissions by 45% to avoid catastrophic climate change. So clearly, we need to make, make reductions in emissions. But local governments play a huge role in this. So over 50% of emissions are under the direct influence or control of local governments. So Gray County can really play a big part here. So in Canada, the major sources of emissions are power and heat for our homes and buildings, transportation and waste. But luckily, this is kind of where municipalities can really impact our built environment, you know, help determine what types of buildings we're building, make land use planning decisions and infrastructure decisions, influence our transportation systems and things like that. So Gray County can really do a lot here. We can also see a lot of benefits from doing, taking action on climate change, other than just helping to mitigate global climate change. So reducing energy means saving money. Saving money for the county, for businesses and for citizens. Encouraging, we can encourage economic growth and green jobs, so investing in clean energy and green building, and, and green building sectors can really help grow the economy here. Can improve our energy security and make sure we're more resilient to power outers and things like that if we're investing in, you know, local sources of energy. And there'll be numerous socioeconomic and health benefits, you know, from active transportation and less pollution. So of course, Gray County is committed to developing a climate change action plan. This will identify a path forward to a sustainable community, and will develop a strategy and actions to help achieve our climate change goals and GHG reductions, and these will be developed, these greenhouse gas targets will be developed through this plan as well. So the plan's going to focus on two areas. Community emissions, so emissions generated by the community, so businesses, citizens, people in the community. And then we'll also look at corporate emissions, so emissions from the corporation of Gray County as well. And there's six areas we want to focus in on when we're thinking about emissions. So emissions in buildings, transportation, waste, agriculture, land use and energy. So now I'm going to talk a bit about the plan process here. So this plan, the, the development process is following the Partners for Climate Protection Program five milestone framework. So this is a program that Gray County's part of, and over 450 municipalities across Canada are part of this program and are following the same plan development process. So it starts with measuring emissions, so seeing exactly how many, what emissions are being generated in the, in the community and by the county. Then we'll look to set a greenhouse gas reduction target, and then develop a plan to meet that target. So another really big part of the plan process is of course engagement. So first I'm going to talk about these few groups. So of course, you know about the Climate Change Task Force, some of you will be sitting on it, and this task force will help provide strategic direction and guidance throughout the plan process. Staff here will also be creating a climate change internal working group, which will include members from various departments across the county, and they'll, they'll bring in that corporate perspective and help inform the process and make sure recommendations are aligning with other strategic plans and make sense for Gray County. And then we'll also have a climate change external working group. And this will, there'll be members from health units, local conservation authorities and different organizations here. And they'll provide local expertise and, and help inform the process as well. So ICLI Canada, my colleagues and I are experts in developing climate change action plans, but we need experts here through these groups that'll help really make, that local expertise that really makes this plan successful in the long term. And we'll also want to do, of course, citizen engagement, engagement with various stakeholders. So over the summer, we'll be conducting online surveys to get feedback on actions and the overall goals of the plan. We'll also be consistently updating public and other stakeholders through online updates. And then we'll be doing two in-person events. We'll do an open house and then some sort of other pop-up event over the summer to also kind of collect feedback and direction for the plan, so things like, you know, ideas for actions and objectives. And then staff here will also be doing targeted meetings and focus groups with specific stakeholders. So staff from member municipalities, from different economic groups like agricultural representatives and things like that. So that's kind of the overall engagement strategy, as well as our whole approach for the plan. But now we want to hear from you. So I'm going to call up my colleague Hiba here, and now we're going to go through this activity, postcards from the future. So.
Hi, everybody. I'm Hiba Kareem. I'm a project officer at ICLI Canada. Welcome and thank you for having us. So hopefully, everybody got a chance to read, well, the slide instructions are a page that you have next to the postcard of the lovely photo we've printed for you. And so you have the instructions there, hopefully you got a chance to read it and maybe start sort of taking down some notes. But the idea is, you know, postcard from the future. It's thinking of, you know, putting yourself 10 to 15, maybe 20 years down the road and thinking about, you know, you know, if this plan is successful, keeping that in mind, you know, what does the success look like to you? You know, what does that look like for both the corporation of Gray County as well as the community? And so there's some examples on your sheet as well. So you're, you're writing it as, as a postcard, so, you know, you can write that down as sort of like bulleted points, or you can sort of write down a more like sort of broad overarching vision statement, however you please. But some examples, you know, we have our things like, oh, our buildings and our homes are entirely powered by renewable energy, or 50% or 90% powered by renewable energy. Our residents are all very well-informed, and they are, they know what steps they need to take to reduce their energy use and energy, energy consumption at both in the workplace and at home. Our schools are maybe waste-free or produce little to no garbage. Everyone at the council meeting here today maybe got here through an electric, you know, driving an electric vehicle, or maybe biking or walking. And then, or, you know, maybe you can keep your statement a bit more broad, like sort of like an overarching vision statement. So you want to make sure that 10 to 15 down, years down the road, given that climate change impacts are projected to increase, that Gray County remains, you know, a healthy, prosperous and sustainable community for everybody. So I guess, we'll maybe go around, we'll give you maybe another 30 seconds if you haven't put some thoughts on paper, to maybe get some of those thoughts down. But the idea is we'll sort of go around, and we have a little bit of time still to get to everybody, and maybe each person can read out one or two of their comments that they have down. But just to give you an idea of how this is going to be utilized in the plan, it's a good way, like a nice interactive way to get you thinking about, you know, what is it that we really want to see for our community down the line, but more importantly, how this will be integrated. Like I said, maybe these components will be integrated into the broad vision statement, you know, that every prep plan has. Maybe these things will inform more specifically our goals and objectives, you know, more specific, high-level objectives for the plan, and perhaps even feed into some of the actions that we focus on. And it's a good place to just, for us to start, since we are also starting the planning process. It's just a good place for us to sort of get that conversation going. And we know that we have the Climate Change Task Force that will have a lot of the councillors, senior management staff and things like that, where that conversation will continue, as well as with the internal working groups. Internal working group, the external working group, and with the community. But it's a, it's really great for us to get some of this feedback in now, and then maybe, you know, take some of your questions and concerns as well. So maybe, does.
Are you ready to?
To share? Are there people who maybe need another 30 seconds, or maybe can we start on this side of the room and maybe read out some of the thoughts you have on, down on the back of your postcard?
Okay. You can write it.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'll start off, and then I'll get the ball rolling, and then I'll start looking at hands. Here's, here's my vision, is more trees planted for the protection of our roads and buildings. So you know, you win from, you win in the sense of you don't have the cost of moving snow and that, plus you have trees which create more oxygen. I see 90% of our garbage being recycled. Mr. Mackey, I'll go around this way, and then I'll, and I'll come back this side. I'll go back and forth. Councillor Mackey.
Oh, sorry, just want to say something. If you.
Oh, just write on the post, the actual cards, because we're going to collect them and bring them back to our, to the team. So we want to collect them, so yeah, please write them down. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Couple of things that first came to mind was the removal of source separate organics from our landfills. And then secondly, which might be controversial, is the expansion of natural gas services throughout rural Ontario. Natural gas is one of the cheaper and cleaner options for heating our homes.
Councillor Robinson, and I'll go back to the site.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I have two. Zero-waste county, and also that all climate change impacts are seamlessly factored into policies, designs, what else do I have? Policy, design, construction, maintenance of infrastructure, overall operations and fleet for the county.
It's broad-based, that's got it all almost. Okay, so we'll go back to this side. Councillor Campbell, do you have, Councillor Desai, did you have one?
Excuse me, using our transportation plan that we're going to be discussing, that we focus on e-vehicles or hybrids.
Councillor Huxson.
Just to expand with what councillor Columbus said, excuse me, we should have power stations throughout all towns, throughout Gray County, so that would actually motivate possibly more vehicle, or electric vehicle sales, because we just don't have that, and that's why you won't see a lot around here.
So just for clarity, councillor Huxson, you're talking about charging stations or, or renewable energy that's creating for charging stations?
Got it. No, I'm talking about the charging stations in particular, there's been a lot of discussion
around it, and it's just not there, so you're charging at home. I know that's all changing, but we should have them in every town, and that, I think it would certainly help out.
A little stronger charging infrastructure system. Okay, so who's on this side next? Counselor Carlton.
Gray County has a transportation system in place that serves the entire community using renewable natural gas vehicles, which replaces the use of traditional vehicles. And the renewable natural gas could be created locally using Gray County waste.
I get you guys all in this task force yet. Okay, Counselor Potter.
Yes, I have three. We have a healthy, vibrant community that is confident of its long-term economic, socio-cultural, and environmental sustainability. We protect our shorelines, waterways, and forests, and we have diversity in our economy, housing choices, and socio-cultural lives.
Okay, thank you. Side, Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I suggest that the county consider an incentive program for all new developments whereby developers can be encouraged to use solar or other types of green heating and cooling applications within those developments. And this one is a little bit more specific to the municipality of Meaford. We have a microclimate around Georgian Bay that's very special and allows us to grow grapes and certain types of apples and, and products, so whatever can be done to, to protect that microclimate. And following on the transportation, again, a recommendation coming from county to all lower tiers that paved shoulders be, be encouraged for any roads that are being reconstructed.
Okay, it's just starting to flow now. Okay, back to this side. Okay, I'll go back. Counselor Desai.
I really should have gone when you first asked me, because both my points got stolen. My first one was Gray County has a reliable transit system that supports our workforce, that transports our workforce to their workplace in a reliable and ecologically responsible manner. My second one was all new homes are built with energy efficiencies to reduce energy use, and there are grants available to retrofit older homes to, to gain energy efficiency.
Okay, just keep her flowing. Counselor, I'm going to go back to this side. Counselor Millen, you're down one on this side, so guys, you gotta, Counselor Millen.
Yeah, but our side's probably worth more. So in the spirit of how this was supposed to work, as I understood it was, we're supposed to write a card to ourselves. Yeah. So anyway, I wrote it to a friend, and I said, "Dear Karen." Not over there anymore. "Dear Karen, I enjoyed a leisurely ride north to Gray County Council on the renewed train on the CP Rail Trail. The foresight of council many years ago was tremendous. Well, mostly. I was able to read the entire agenda and enjoy a hot coffee on my ride up, so I was well-prepared." So, I think we need that mass transit back again.
Well, you know what? Great minds think alike, because I also had something stolen from my postcard in the sense that I was saying, "Dear son, it was great for us to ride today on the electric train to Own Sound to watch the hockey game, the attack, smoking Kitchener. I hope to, hope to do it again soon." How's that? I think we're good here. So who, anymore on this side? No? Okay, we're back. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My postcard reads "garbage" in big, bold letters, and it says, "I haven't heard that word for a decade. Isn't everything recyclable and reusable?"
All righty. Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The card to me was, "It's great to see that the international airport is being used for for- for transporting goods to the whole area instead of using ancient trucking services up the area."
Dear son, I think they used the first electric car, or electric plane at the Wyerden Airport. Okay, back to this side. Counselor Hutcherson.
I was going to send you a postcard, but I decided that sending an email was a lot more efficient.
I think you got one up in everyone there. All right, okay. Counselor Campbell, you got up something there, Counselor Campbell. Must be talking about agriculture, eh?
I was actually thinking that Mr. Millen would have jumped in there, but he didn't. The agricultural use, the renewable energy, the solar panels that we will see on the way up in this electric train that we're going to have, and the digesters to look after affluence from the agricultural industry.
Saying they're going to expand. Very good. Okay, who's back left over here? Counselor Woodbury, you must have some. Electric, electric motorcycles?
No. Some things are, you know. Mine was more to do with looking back at policies that, that, that renewable energy and climate change was taken into consideration in all the policies that we came up with in the county.
So just to tease that a little bit more, John, a little bit more like a lens?
Yeah, that, that, that's a lens that we put on all policies. So on a go-forward basis, we're looking more at that. Like, with our transportation, the buses would be running on new, renewable energy. We'd have the train service, we'd have just things like that. More emphasis put on, on public transportation and less on individual. Hard to do in rural, but-
That will be the challenge, but we'll have to work toward that, right? Okay, who's left over here? Did we get everybody? I guess we did. Counselor Potter.
Well, just one that just occurred to me, because my friend Bill Abbott's was here. I don't know, he may, he may have gone to the meeting. But, we, we are able to use our well-developed cycling and pedestrian trails throughout the Gray County to get to where we want to go.
Good. Okay, I'm going to pick you out, Counselor Sampson. You're going to have to, you're going to have to play ball here.
Well, Counselor Potter stole most of mine, since he read from our sustainable action plan that we already have one. But, but what he did miss is that we want to have definitely a much broader range of housing, focusing more on the smaller units. They're more energy-efficient, and more people can afford them.
Certainly that's going back to net zero homes and, and that type of thing where there, there's, they don't have any impact that way. Staff, come on, we have, we have some staff here. I want to hear some things from staff. This is a very, Randy? Randy, you're going first. I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, I don't think I can add too much further than what council's already added. I think that's, it's fantastic in terms of some of the ideas and suggestions that council's put forward. Obviously, one that's, I think, been mentioned by several councillors is on, with respect to waste. And so I would personally, I guess, love, love to see a green bin program that would be offered throughout the county, in order to ensure that our, our organic waste is not going to hurt landfills.
So you're not taking that electric train to Kitchener to watch the attack beat them down there?
That's a good idea as well.
CEO, you're going to go next.
I'm going to go next.
Yes.
One of the things that I, I think would be important to reflect in our, in our plan is that the water quality in Georgian Bay is maintained or improved.
So, dear Norm?
I think I'm all about the natural environment, and so I'd like to see that continue, because that has a lot of impact on our, our climate. So I'd like to see the reforestation continue and, and that piece.
Thank you. Who else am I going to pick on? Jennifer.
I was afraid of that. I think my postcard will talk about how our long-term care homes have gone green, and the residents have been a part of those initiatives that are unique to each of the care communities.
Great. Okay, Kathy.
I wouldn't mind to see, along with the electric cars, the, the continued development of hydrogen cars.
Okay, I was at the car show this few weeks back, and hydrogen is something that's, there's only one filling station yet in Mississauga, but that is, Toyota's developed a hydrogen car, so.
Okay. Jody.
Sure, I guess what I would like to see is that we preserve a lot of the green spaces and agricultural spaces that we have now, if not expand them, so there's always lots of room to roam, even as the population grows.
Okay, Sandra.
I'm with Jody about maintaining the green spaces, but just making sure that we have a safe world for our future generations, for my grandchildren to enjoy, and their grandchildren to enjoy.
Sustainability. All right. Who I got? Michael, and I'm going to pick on y'all.
I won't invoke solicitor client privilege, but I will maybe focus on the legal system and suggest, and any sort of highly paper-oriented system that takes a ground-up look at how they're handling information and moving over to a paperless system in addition to all the other impacts of a very large and distributed multiplayer system that trucks people around from place to place and puts, you know, a fair number of vehicles on the road.
That sounds like a lawyer response. Thanks, Michael, just teasing. I see Scott.
I guess I would say, this is probably expected of me, but for finding our flooding policy, such that we're better reflecting the variability, we tend to think now that we have our hazard lands and our flood lanes, and as long as we're one foot outside of that, we're safe, but realizing that that mapping is going to change over time and will be variable, and then starting to think longer-term in terms of health and safety in that respect.
Thanks, Scott. And I see Pat's hiding behind, so you're not going to get away. Pat?
I thought I was clear on that, that one, hiding behind the big thing here. I think a fleet of electrical, electric automated vehicles, shared vehicles, say, six or eight passenger, running throughout the county has greatly reduced our carbon footprint and, and road congestion.
Thanks, Pat. Mary Lou.
One thing for us, I know we've talked about, and Jody and IT keep mentioning, is how much paper we store. Finance tends to kill a lot of trees, especially at audit season. I think we would be looking at ways to perhaps electronically store invoices that we wouldn't necessarily be printing. And, another thing would be just the amount of things that we store, in departments in general, versus looking for more storage space, is how do we have less that we retain?
Okay, I know Gray Highlands, we're going to a paperless system and, and that sort of thing. Is it Melissa?
For the, just thinking of it from the social service background, I'd have to agree with the maintaining the natural, the parkland, and all the beautiful areas where people can visit for free, and keeping the water quality safe for swimming and things that people can enjoy without having to spend a lot of money.
Thank you. Anne Marie, I wasn't going to forget you.
For me, it would be that affordable housing was seen the same as healthcare, that it was universal for everybody, so that everybody had opportunity for it. And while we were building all of our extra affordable housing, that they would be energy-efficient and sustainable.
All right. I hope the press is picking all this up along with our consultants. And Rob, I see you're back there, and I think you should be able to speak too, because, grab a mic and it's all important on communication, and maybe there's no paper in that communication?
I would say just greater understanding by our community, how they can have a positive impact in their own businesses and in their own habits, as well as thinking differently about maybe what a traditional workplace looks like, and opportunities for remote working to reduce travel, and different work weeks.
Okay, I think anybody else on county council has anything that we missed? All right, I'll put it back to you guys. You guys got lots of information there. I'll, I'll let you finish up.
Great, thank you very much. That was fantastic. Lots to take back, think about. So we're going to do another activity for about 10, 15 minutes. So actually, Hiba, I'll just pass it over.
Yeah, for sure. So, sort of, a slightly different format, I guess. Around you, you'll see Post-its that are there for you to sort of write on. But the activity today is Ingredients for Success. So, for this activity, we really want to think about, you know, what are elements of a plan that make, you know, it successful? Or what are, what are some things that we need to think about that would be help in successful implementation of a plan? So, maybe you want to reflect on past plans that you've had, and what specifically in those plans sort of helped, helped the longevity of that plan and that long-term success of the plan. So, we have a few examples, so, you know, more broadly thinking about like, well, you know, we want to make sure that we have rigorous data sources that we're getting, all our information, all our like baseline, our baseline data, our feasibility studies are all in place, and we're getting it from the same sources, if possible. You know, we want to make sure there's thorough engagement of our community and our stakeholders, that there are measurable indicators to track our progress over time, something that we can quantify. You know, for this plan specifically, maybe we want to, although this is a mitigation plan, maybe we want to identify some adaptation co-benefits. When it comes to the implementation side of things, making sure that those like roles and responsibilities are communicated and are clear, and, and everyone's really accountable. And then, maybe you've created a plan in the past, and an act, that's full of actions and strategies, but it needs very clear communication and sort of maybe marketing, if you will, of that plan to make sure that it's adopted, well, of course, by Gray County and your member municipalities, but as well as the community. There's a community focus to this plan as well. So, those are some things that we sort of thought were good examples, so maybe I can ask you to write two to four sort of examples, like the ones that you've, we've just talked about, on your stickies. Each, each sticky note, maybe one example, and we'll go around, and as you're writing, you know, your two to four, we'll start collecting them. And what we're going to do to sort of facilitate the conversation is sort of start coalescing them on this Bristol board over here, just to see what the common themes are, and maybe some interesting outliers. And so while we may not have time, just keeping your time in mind, to go around and have all of you sort of read out some of your Ingredients for Success, if you will, we're going to read out all the sort of common themes that we see, and maybe a couple of those, those outliers or, you know, points, and elaborate maybe on, on a few of them that we thought were sort of different and stood out. But I, I'm sure we'd agree on a lot of the things on the board, so, yeah, we'll read out as we go, but that's, that's the idea.
Yeah, so you're, like, two to three top ingredients for both plan development and plan implementation. So, we'll come around.
We'll come around.
Just turn this. Just. Okay, so we're seeing funding, that's always an important one, oops. Accountability, so follow-through on policies and programs. Okay, we're definitely seeing stuff around data, data communication, following up down the road, again, part of the implementation. We're seeing- Plan must have clear and easy-to-follow, I can't read the last word here. Steps, okay. Yes, of course. Yeah, so as we typically lay out- Yeah, so as we typically lay out an action plan, you of course have your actions and strategies in place, but oftentimes you have your supporting actions, tasks that go alongside those actions, so easy to follow steps. Okay, coordination with other areas or counties, yes, definitely important with a multi-tiered government, of course. We're seeing communication. That's come up a few times here. Political will, maybe you can expand on that? Is that for like targets or implementation? Cool, great. Um, we're seeing, I'm just gonna pass a few, there you go. Okay, wide community engagement, so related to communication. Actual target dates, yes, that's definitely important for implementation, though can be challenging, of course. Communication and participation, so again, that same theme coming up.
I'm seeing, you know, what are the tangible or end results that are desired? So again, all of that comes from all of your input, all the working group input, all the community engagement and input as well, so similar themes for sure.
Um, we have one here, realistic. So I guess just someone wanna elaborate on that. Realistic. Yeah, like realistic targets and actions that are doable by the county. Yep, definitely we want it to be a workable plan that we can definitely do. And sure goals are smart, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound, so kind of related to realistic, actually.
I see here something about provincial support, so around policy and program leadership. Does anyone wanna maybe elaborate on that a little bit? Uh, the provincials. I have a sticky here about provincial support, so stuff around policy and program and leadership around that. Okay, so anyone who sort of, oh, maybe it was Kim?
I think in order to be successful, you know, in the, in the longer term, there will have to be good alignment between, you know, our objectives and where the province is, is going.
Yeah, and more around implementation, so being appropriately resourced, having enough funding, staffing to implement all these actions over the long term. You know, we know lots of people can wear many hats here, so making sure, you know, division of responsibilities, selecting actions that are feasible and implementable over the long term and having tons of support from community organizations, community partners to help implement those actions. You know, there is a, there is a responsibility for Gray County here and member municipalities, but we're also putting that forward onto the community as well and making sure, yeah, that they are able to support what we have planned. Any last stickies, any last notes to collect, just for our records? Okay.
Yes, awareness, measurable goals, communication, absolutely, incentives for development. Great, so this is lots of, lots of stuff to think about. This is all really good, good feedback. Does any, yeah, I think we kind of listed them all out, those general themes. Does anyone have any other sort of last points to share?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I wasn't gonna do this out loud, but this may be for Randy and Scott. We're doing a lot of talking about transportation and trying to keep people off the roads, but then our planning department, our staff, want to expand our settlement areas. More septics, more schools to travel to, more travel to residential areas, which directly works against any action plan. Just a point. Okay, anything else? You may wanna reach out to Counselor Boddy and Deputy Warden, Counselor Hicks, because they're not here and they may have some ideas also.
Great idea.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for your time. We'll take all of this back, give it some thought, we'll send you the results as well of kind of what we discussed today. And hopefully you'll see a great plan in later this year. So thank you very much. Oh, and we'll, we'll collect those postcards for our records as well.
How about a round of applause for, I guess? And maybe that, maybe that also puts green in our pocket, eh? What that? Nobody's listening. Green in our pocket, eh, Randy? Keeps, or keep green in our pocket. All right. So going back to our agenda of items, I think Madam Clerk, we're at C. And this is from Anne Marie, come on up, and this is for, I need a mover in a second, please, for the housing, for the housing benefit transfer payment agreement. Counselor Robinson, Counselor Millen. Anne Marie, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Counsel. This report is to enter into a transfer payment agreement with the province for us to be able to support the Canada Ontario Housing Benefit, unfortunately known as COB, and the federal and provincial housing allowance program is what it is, basically. This program is available to people that are eligible to be on our waitlist or on our waitlist. It is a housing benefit that is portable. It is paid to the tenant or to the resident or tenant directly. It looks, basically the way it'll work is we're looking at someone on our waitlist that maybe is in a apartment that is suitable for them. It, it works for them except that it's unaffordable. So we would be able to offer that person the ability to apply for this program. The program uses a formula in order to figure out how much money they may be eligible for. It looks at what the average market rent is, and the average market rent for Gray County is determined by the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Association. And then it looks at what that person is making. It looks at about thirty percent of what their net income is, so it's that adjusted net income. And then it comes up with a formula actually as to how much money they would receive. I did use an example in my report of a senior on a fixed income that may be eligible for about a hundred and seventy-six dollars towards their, towards their rent. As our part for the county, it's not actually a program that we are entirely delivering. Our role is to identify people on our waitlist that might be eligible for this program, assist them with the application, ensure that they're eligible, figure out how much money they would be, and then we pass that application on to the Ministry of Finance. It is going to be, because it's going to be an annual program, that person, if they're eligible, will be then taken over by the Ministry of Finance and would receive this monthly payment. The payment is portable, so it can be taken outside of Gray County, so let's say that person moved to Simcoe or Toronto or somewhere, that money would go with them. As I believe we have a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, which, sorry, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars we were allotted for this year. We figure we should be able to get about forty subsidies, thirty-five, between thirty-five and forty subsidies. And if a person is receiving the subsidy, they do have to come off our waitlist because they're considered to be subsidized housing at that point. We receive two hundred and fifty dollars per application, which is, that person's eligible, so it's a successful application. And we also have some funds to be able to help with last month's rent if a person does have to move. And that would be refunded from the province, too. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Anne Marie, is this net new money to the county, or is this a reallocation of funds from some other program somewhere?
Marie?
So this is new money, so it is from the Canada, from the, from the National Housing Strategy. In saying that, we received less money and for other programs from the national, from our, from the province, so whether that money was used for this, I'm not sure, but it is new money for this year that we are receiving.
Thank you for that. Any other questions then to Anne Marie? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. All right. So Melissa? I cannot, it's regards to motion for the Ontario Works Electronic Document Management. Can I have a mover in a second? Counselor Mackey, Counselor Patterson, come on up, Melissa. Floor is yours.
Okay, good morning. My name's Melissa McCullough. I'm an Ontario Works Manager. I'm here on Barb Fady's behalf today. And I just wanna just kind of quickly highlight the report. What we're asking for with this report is for us to adopt an electronic data management system. And this would be under the guidelines of the Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services, the MCCSS. They are currently implementing it across Ontario in the Ontario Disability Support Offices. And it's been rolling out well there. We would like to contract with Nimble Information Strategies. They are the vendor of record for the province for this project to go across the ODSP offices. And they were also just recently contracted by the Toronto Employment and Social Services to do electronic data management in their office, and Toronto has moved ahead within Ontario Works with it, and it's been working well. And we would also like, we're requesting that the costs for implementing be allocated from the social services reserves. So just to give you a little bit of background, in the report, I included a couple links to the Social Assistance Modernization Strategy. And this is the ministry's strategy for, for digital improvements. And the electronic data management system is in there to be implemented across Ontario Works offices in 2020, 2021. We would be considered an early adopter of it. We feel that we're in a good place for it, because we've been doing a lot within our department within the last couple of years to modernize and really drastically decrease the amount of paper that we manage. And just to draw your attention to one of the links within the report, it is called the Journey to Modernization. That's our, that's our Gray County Ontario Works Department journey. And just, we've been doing this since 2014. We've been doing significant things every year to move forward. But in 2018, we adopted what to file procedures. And what that did was actually, instead of increasing, it, it really drew to staff's attention that we should only be filing what the ministry actually requires, not just everything under the sun because you think that someday there might be an investigation on the case, or that someday you might wanna look at that paper. Unless the ministry is asking for us to keep it on file, then we, we shouldn't be holding on to all this paper. It also increases AMPIPA risks by keeping a lot of information around that isn't required. And so that was two years ago that we started working on this new culture. And that has allowed us, I believe, to be in a good place today, to be able to adopt the electronic data management. We also, we, we have adopted the Alfresco, our Gray County electronic filing procedures. We've been using it enthusiastically since early days. We have texting software within our department to be able to communicate with clients. That, that reduces paper and reduces clients needing to come to the office. And we have, we've also introduced electronic communication policies to support all of this. So, you know, two years in the works with moving this stuff forward, our, our staff are not resistant to a change like this at all. What it actually looks like is the paper that comes into the office, it gets scanned. And through Nimble, it goes into an infrastructure with the Ontario Public Service. And it becomes part of the Ontario Public Service Document, Document Management System. And then from there, and this is really key, it isn't held in a separate file, it goes right into the Social Assistance Management System, which is our technology that our caseworkers use for everything. So it really would make SAMs, that's what we, we call it, a one-stop shop for our caseworkers to be able to access everything on the client. And it also, when we're talking about, you know, remote, working from home and our caseworkers being able to move around and meet with clients, to go to them, this would really, really move that along. So we see a lot of benefits for staff and clients with this. And I think I've mentioned already, like Nimble, they have, they have implemented this in thirteen ODSP offices and Toronto Ontario Works. And then we're really the first wave of the voluntary Ontario Works offices that would be adopting it. From past experience, we see being in the early wave of adopting, that you tend to get a lot more support from the ministry team. If you wait till the very last opportunity to get on board, then they tend to be a bit tired. And you don't get the same amount of support. So we think with what we've adopted so far and with the enthusiasm of the staff, that we could successfully implement this, this year. And if this was approved, we would enter into a contractual agreement with Nimble. We would use Toronto's agreement as a, as a good basis to start. We've had a good look at it. And the total ask here from reserves is fifty-nine thousand is the estimate that we've received to be able to implement this. And we think that over time, we'll see some pretty significant administrative efficiencies by doing so. Does anyone have any questions or?
Well, thanks, Melissa. I know at our municipality, we use the moderate modernization funds to do, go less paper, and so we try to be more efficient in that part, but, questions? Questions? Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the report. It always concerns me when I hear, well, we're gonna spend this amount of money and it's gonna create efficiencies. That's great, but is there no way of somehow quantifying what the estimate might be of the efficiencies to offset the, the capital expenditure? And I'm not certainly trying to single out social services, I, I hear it repeatedly. But it, it would be helpful if there was some estimation of what the efficiency is gonna, or savings is gonna be, rather than just, yeah, we're gonna save money, let's spend a bazillion dollars. So just a comment, thank you.
Melissa, or you want? You gotta hit your, you gotta hit your mic.
One of the things that this, it can allow us to do is to focus on what the outcomes are that the ministry's putting in front of us in terms of having to increase the employability of our, our clients. And so by creating efficiencies, we free up staff time to actually spend with the clients. And that includes our administrative staff. There's a lot that they can do to move that along, so we actually have a, a hope of reaching our targets by being able to, to spend that time with the clients. And, you know, down the road, when this is fully implemented, it could result in a reduction of actual staffing. If we needed to go in that direction.
Madam CEO?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I have the exact same questions. I have the exact same questions of, of the department. I have real concerns with this. I think that this is all part of a process through the, that's mentioned briefly in the report about the modernization of social services and where the province wants to go with the delivery of that service and how they want to be able to manage it differently than it is now. And I think this is a step along the way. If, if we didn't have the resources already in reserve that we do to support this transition, I would be, I would be asking for them, but the, the, the resources that are in the reserve came from the, the province initially. So I feel like we have the, the ability to, to make this change now. But you're not wrong. It is concerning.
Counselor Potter?
Thank you, Warden. I have the same concern.
I have the same concern. When we're asked to do single sourcing, is it not possible, I'm not talking just about this report, but is it not possible to see some comparison of what the other companies' prices would be? Because I'm being asked to approve something with no idea of whether this is really the best deal or not. And again, it's not a lack of trust for staff, but I think it would offer some comfort to members of council to know that what we're approving is the best thing for the ratepayers.
Counselor that. Madam CEO.
Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we had a choice. This is the vendor of record to deliver this service. So there, it's not like there was a competitive situation to be had.
Counselor Potter?
I believe somewhere there was, in the report, it says that there are other companies, but that they are not as, that they would require some more software or something like that. And I would just like to see a financial comparison so that I know what the dollars involved are.
With purchasing, we did do some research to try and find if there was someone that we could contact, that we could get that sort of information. And we weren't able to find anyone that was working with government agencies similar to ours to do this type of project.
Thanks, Melissa, for that. Any other questions? All right. Seeing that all in favor of the report, that is carried. Thank you. All right, then, moving forward, then Savannah, or who are you coming?
Savannah and Jill.
Okay. And I apologize, Savannah. You must have been hiding back there because I was zeroing in on everybody, and I didn't see you. And I was told you were there, so maybe you were hiding. So make sure you get your answers in for the previous, okay? So go ahead. Oh, so I need a mover and a seconder for this, please. Counselor Desai, Counselor Patterson, no, Carrollton? So go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Warden and counsel. I have with me today Jill Root, who is the Manager of Economic Development from Bruce County. We thought it was important that both of us were here today, and both of us will be at Bruce County Council next week to talk about this exciting project. So as you know, last year around this time, it was April 2019, when the IRCC, which is Immigration, Refugees and Citizenship Canada, put out a call for local immigration partnerships right across Canada. And we thought, you know what? Our area in rural Ontario has been very much underserved with any newcomer and immigration type of services, especially settlement services. We wanted to go after this. But we knew as a competitive process and looking as a region, that it was really important that we did this in concert with Bruce County as well. So we have struck a partnership, we put an application together, and we were successful, which is very exciting. So as of last week, we have officially signed our agreement with the federal government to be able to deliver this project. But we wanted to bring our agreement between Gray and Bruce to you today so that we can execute that and then deliver on the project that we've promised we can do. We have been negotiating with IRCC over the last, I'm going to say, almost three months. It's been a little while, but it's a really interesting program. So there were two different streams to the local immigration partnership. One stream works directly with newcomers. One stream works directly with organizations. We are the stream that works with organizations. So we're not allowed to provide direct services to newcomers. That was fortunate enough to be awarded to the YMCA. So we do, in the area, have both streams. We were both awarded for the same time period. It's a five-year project to offer those full settlement services here in Gray and Bruce County. So we're very excited about that. But we just want to be clear on the fact that we don't get to work directly with newcomers as our project because this is very much an indirect service. But by working with the YMCA closely, we can make sure that all of our priorities are aligned and that we're putting our resources the best way we possibly can. A couple of the items that we did want to point out as to what this actually does, it was included in the 2020 budget, so I know you've had a little piece of this already, but it is fully funded. So there are no dollars coming directly from Gray County or Bruce County for this. IRCC has funded everything for the next three years, and then we'll go into negotiations for the following two after that. But what it does allow us to do is hire one full-time staff person right away. So after we go to Bruce County Council next week, we'll be able to put that posting out and get our staff person hired. And then in year two, we get to bring on an additional part-time staff person, as well as consultants to help develop strategies and really work with a group that is going to be Gray and Bruce specific, and it's called a partnership council. And it's going to be a big group. There's 40 representatives required from both Gray and Bruce to put our heads together, put our resources together, and really drive this project home. So everything that we do will come to that table and then come back to you through our reports and our updates to make sure that we are achieving the goals of this project. So we will have consultants hired in year one to develop that action plan and figure out exactly what it is that we need to do to better coordinate the services in the region. When we started looking and putting this application together, we realized that there are a lot of people who are trying to help with immigration and settlement services. But it's all on the edge of desks, and it's all scattered. And there's a lot of resources that, if better aligned, could probably make a huge difference. And that is what our job is going to be over the next five years, is aligning those resources specifically. I also want to mention that we couldn't have done this without the help of the Gray Bruce welcoming communities. David Morris and Colleen Perdant and May Ip were absolutely instrumental in helping us put together this application and helping us with the research and with those on-the-ground eyes and ears as well. So this is very much a group effort that we've been able to bring to the fore. And I think David is hoping to be here, and I see Walid's here to cheer us on as well because this is so important to the region. So as I mentioned, we will have both settlement service side for direct and indirect services between the YMCA and us. We will be developing a strategy and action plan, which will come back to this table for direction and approval. And other than that, I don't want to go through all of this in detail with you, but if there are specific questions, please let me know. I have attached the agreement between Gray and Bruce saying what we will do. So Jill will be the lead from Bruce, and I will be the lead from Gray, and then Ma'am Preet and Jacinda will be the daily kind of on-the-ground with the new hires that will come aboard. So if you have any questions, please let us know. We are thrilled about this project.
Thanks, Savannah and Jill. And Counselor Desai, you have a question?
Thank you for the report. One question that I do have is, and the report does mention that the LIP won't be involved in providing direct services to the newcomers. And to provide some context for the question, my family moved to Gray County 13 years ago when I was 16 years old. And while we were very open about us being newcomers, and the community in Gray Highlands definitely stepped up to the plate in making us feel very welcome, there are families that are either unable or unwilling to do that. So would it not be better to have a centralized location that does provide a one-stop service for such newcomers? And to get to that question, the question in the end is, in the opinion of the Director of Economic Development, Tourism and Culture, should council lobby higher levels of government to allow municipalities to provide such direct services?
Thanks, Counselor Desai.
That is a great question. And I think that an answer to that will come out once we've got our strategy and action plans started, and we've spent time with the YMCA trying to figure out exactly what this looks like. We definitely do envision a one-stop shop, but we don't, as far as the LIP goes, we're not allowed to deliver that. The feds have been very clear, this is an indirect service only. And that's been part of that ongoing negotiation. There were activities and items that we really wanted to include because we thought they were very important, but we were told they had to come out because they just were not eligible services. But that doesn't mean that we can't work with the Y and with welcoming communities to figure out exactly what that looks like. So I don't have an answer for you this moment, but it's certainly on our radar. And hopefully, in the next couple of months, we put a fairly quick run on this. We'd like to be able to have that draft plan together before the end of the year so that when we hit year two, because the fiscal for this will be April 1st, we can just go. So we'll be back shortly.
Follow-up, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The report also mentions that this program is in place for five years and that there would have to be separate negotiations for the last two years. My question, Mr. Warden, is what happens beyond the five years? And as a follow-up to that question about beyond five years, should council start budgeting today for those last two years and beyond the five years?
Savannah?
Part of this is going to be a learning curve. The local immigration partnership, it's been around for several years. So this is just the first time we've been able to participate. But here on county is just entering their second year. So they'll be in a 10-year period that they've been able to do this. Our intent through this five years is to be able to work it into both of our work plans so that we can build it into the staff and into our everyday so that we can continue with or without funding, that there are increments and things that we can do along the way. So that is why with Ma'am Preet's position and then Jacinda's position here, we'll be able to build those in as those work plans go. So I wouldn't say that we need to be setting aside any additional funds. Even the budget, even though what you'll have in front of you is a three-year budget to start, we still have to negotiate every single year. And they've been very clear on that. Yes, this is your placeholder, and this is what we're telling you you'll get, but we still negotiate with them every year. And the better we do, the more likely we are for four and five, so we're going to rock it. That's the plan.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Kivini?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Savannah. This is really wonderful and exciting. I noticed in your discussion of the report and within the report, there, it's primarily focused on newcomer integration and retention. I wonder if you could speak at all to the attraction part of it? That's mentioned only briefly there in the report, but we well know we need to attract more people to Gray County to take, to support our workforce. So I just wondered if you could speak to the attraction side of it.
Savannah?
Thank you. And that's actually a really good question. We started with the retention side because we know that if we're not good at retention, our attraction efforts are going to go empty. That has been a major challenge for us, and part of that is trying to make sure that we have those steps in place and those organizations in place and a streamlined process so that people, when they do get here, it's not, you know, "Go see this person, go see this person, go see this person," and start sending them through this long battle, because that's what it is right now. In terms of very focused attraction, because we're not allowed to work directly with newcomers, we can't just do attraction-type strategies. But by working with organizations and through part of that planning, we very much see support for their efforts. But what that exactly looks like at this point, until we have that partnership council together, and we've had those discussions with employers and with organizations, I can't give you a great answer on that, but it's not off the radar. It's just, we have to figure out what we're allowed to do around what this program looks like, and that will come through those conversations and getting it into the strategy.
Okay, is there any other questions then? I know your guests from Bruce County, do you have anything to add, or?
Thank you. I just want to say, similar to Gray County, you know, our portfolio for economic development at Bruce County really comprises of both community development and, of course, business development. And so, and these go hand in hand. And particularly, when we're talking about newcomers and we're supporting our businesses because we realize that there are a lot of labor shortage issues right now, and that's one of our major initiatives for this year, is attraction of newcomers. And we realize that that really is very well-connected with also community development, too. So the attraction and the retention goes hand in hand, working with our entrepreneurs, working with our communities to ensure that we are a welcoming community of Gray Bruce is really very important. So I'm really excited to work on this project with Savannah.
Well, certainly, I know from our gathering at Roma that they're quite, Bruce County's quite interested, coming back on the map. So maybe that's part of the...
But we won as the lead applicant. And I just noticed that David has arrived, so I just wanted him to give a wave because he's been a very integral part of this, David Morris from Welcoming Communities.
Very good. Well, it's always good to work together, for sure. I know from accommodations, I know Jacinda was working on part of that last year with regards to accommodations. And that's also important in bringing new people here to our community is where they're going to live. I don't know if you have any expansion on that, but you don't have to. I just know that's very important also, right? So, so Counselor Body?
Thank you, Warden McQueen. I noted in media yesterday that somebody in Ontario, I'm not sure if it was Ontario Government, was asking the federal government to double the quota of new Canadians allowed to come into Ontario. So recognizing labor needs was what the story was about, but I just can't remember if it was an Ontario Government, and of course, I can't find it now. But there is going to be more new Canadians coming in, more opportunities for us, and this program is so important to be in place and have rolling when that happens.
Certainly, if you find it, you could send it out to us, Counselor Body. And I know from Canada itself, we're moving into an aging baby boomer situation, so young people and working force is very important as probably moving forward. So certainly, that's, and there's probably a lot of immigrants that come here that have a lot of skills. And it's that skill base, or how do you get them upgraded to Canadian standards that allows them to use that skill base, too, right? Any further questions? Okay, well, thank you for that. And all in favor of that report? That is carried. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are you inviting your guests for lunch there, Savannah?
If that's okay with you, Ed.
I don't see anybody opposing it, so. So moving on then, so that's the end of the items on our agenda, but we need to go back to a couple items that were polled. And the one item that I polled was with regards to PDR CW17. That's with regards to, am I got the right one? No, I got the wrong one.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, correspondence from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, provincial policy statement. The only reason I polled that, and I'm looking at you, Randy, in the sense that, or am I supposed to have somebody move this? I need a mover and a seconder for that first. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Gamble, Counselor Kivini? Part of the reason I polled this is just, I know there's some changes to the provincial policy, and I don't know, at some time, can you bring every report back to this body to sort of talk about those changes? I know it doesn't come in, is it May 1st? So I don't know if you wish to speak to that or not.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, so the recent provincial policy statement was approved by the province. Staff are currently still reviewing all the changes that have been put in place. As the warden indicated, it does come into effect on May 1st, 2020. Some of the key changes that we've seen so far is extending the planned growth horizon from 20 years to 25 years, greater flexibility when it comes to expanding settlement areas, adding further references to supporting a changing climate and green infrastructure, adding policy direction that's responding to the recommendations from the Special Advisor on Flooding. And the province recently released their flooding strategy document, which staff, again, are also currently reviewing. Increasing the minimum requirement for housing land supply from 10 years to 15 years, enhancing land use compatibility policies for sensitive land uses, as well as a number of other changes. And as I mentioned, staff are reviewing these changes, and we plan on bringing a report summarizing some of those key changes for council's awareness.
Thank you for that, Randy. So we don't need to change the motion then because you're planning on bringing that back anyway, right? Okay, so thank you for that. Any other discussion of that item? Seeing that all in favor? That's carried. And the other one, I think, Madam CEO, you wish to have it polled, and that was item E, County of Halliburton, support the tourism oriental, oriented destination signature fee increase. So Madam CEO? I need a mover and a seconder. Who wishes to move? Counselor Woodbury, Counselor Potter? So it's on the floor. Go ahead, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This correspondence from the County of Halliburton is just raising awareness of the issue of the fees for the TODS signage. So this is the tourism directional signage that you see around the province. They are, TODS is proposing some very significant increases to the costs to business of having their signage available. I know that this is an issue that has been raised by our tourism staff and our tourism sector representatives. I'm not aware that there was much in the way of consultation with the businesses with regard to, you know, whether or not these costs were sustainable for them. So I just wanted to bring it forward to your attention that there is concern, I am aware personally of concern amongst our tourism sector with the significance of this increase at one time.
So, Madam CEO, are you suggesting a separate motion that would sort of send back that concern to the body that's moving this forward?
I think if council wishes, they could provide a motion of support to the resolutions that Halliburton has provided to... that Halliburton has provided to us.
Okay, so as written, then. Okay, so that's what this is doing. Are there any other conversation or discussion with this motion that's on the floor with regards to support? Counselor Potter?
Just a couple of quick points. One is that I think this will force a lot of the smaller operators, which describes a lot of tourism operators in Gray and Bruce, for that matter. It will force them out of this availability. And we also have, a lot of our tourism features across Gray are not on the main highways. They're, they need that signage on the main roads to direct people to them. So these are both important points for the businesses in our county.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Potter, especially if they're natural features that you just can't move to the highway, right? For sure. All right, any other discussion on that, then? Okay, seeing that all in favor of that? That is carried. So moving on, I think we're into other business, and I have asked the CEO if she can do an update with regards to coronavirus, and we know what's out there and the issues that are about. So, Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The members of the Long Term Care Committee of Management would have received an extensive package of information from Jennifer this morning. The province is working closely with the long-term care sector to enhance their screening activities at the homes. So I think you'll see, likely see some media coverage around that. I wanted to specifically provide some information about our staff and the discussions that we've had. I'm not aware that there are any specific positive cases of COVID-19 in Gray County at this time. We continue to monitor, we look to the health unit for their information. But given that this is now a pandemic and the information that's coming out of the federal and provincial government, I think we need to continue to be as prepared as we can. So I've had some discussions with staff and with our insurance providers regarding staff compensation in the event of the need for self-isolation, or should there be a general community quarantine? The principle underlying all of this is that staff should not be penalized for doing the right thing and staying home if they're unwell, and that also no one receives an unintended advantage as a result of this. So we have two groups to consider, our full and part-time staff who have benefits, and part-time staff without regular benefits who receive pay-in-lieu in their pay. So one scenario is that you may have been exposed, or you've traveled, and you're advised by public health or your doctor to self-isolate. And the conditions around this continue to move, just seeing now that the province has announced their, in the GTA, the screening centers outside of the hospital emergency rooms. So I anticipate that that will continue to roll out across the province. But right now, we don't have strict criteria for you must be tested, so people are phoning the health unit in Telehealth Ontario and getting the best information that's available to them. If you are a full-time staff member, you may work at home if you're going to self-isolate. You can make arrangements to make up the time later with your supervisor. If you're not able to work, Sun Life will consider short-term disability benefits from day one. And I understand that several of the insurance carriers are also providing that benefit to their plan members. So when I say that you're not able to work, what I'm saying is that you have the kind of job that doesn't allow you to do work from home. For our part-time staff, if you need to self-isolate, you have the ability to apply for employment insurance. And yesterday, the federal government announced that they were waiving that one-week waiting period for benefit receipts. In the second scenario, the province, or the federal government, or Gray-Bruce Public Health, or some other entity, puts some sort of shutdown in place of nonessential services and asks people to really make a concerted effort to stay home. In that situation, I think our full-time staff would find themselves in one of probably three different scenarios. If you are well, then you may be redeployed to assist with essential services in other places, and I'm thinking in the, helping out in the long-term care homes. Again, working at home if possible, or making up the time at a later date, or taking vacation. If you're not able to work, again, Sun Life will consider short-term disability benefits. Part-time staff, the same thing. If we have part-time staff who are well and they're able to be redeployed to assist with essential service delivery, we'll likely be in need of those resources should that happen. And again, the potential for EI benefits. I wanted to make council aware, we have some staff who are at higher risk in this, or they have a close family relationship that is also someone who's at very high risk should they become ill. Those folks will be working with that on a case-by-case basis, but my first priority is making sure that people are safe. And if people need to be working from home ahead of some other broader pronouncement from another authority, I think that's what we want to do, is to make sure that they're fine. Also, I'm all looking for your support or your guidance around using our discretion to cancel or postpone events in compliance with the request to main social distancing and minimize the potential for community transition. For example, there have been a number, it was mentioned already today, that the Maple Syrup Festival in Elmira has been canceled. The Bruce Power has canceled their March break events and closed the visitor center. I think we're seriously considering the March break activities at Gray Roots and our Maple Syrup Festival, whether or not those need to be canceled. So we'll be watching closely to the information that comes out of the health unit, as well the Friday opening of the Voices of Gray Museum. I think it may be wise to simply postpone that for a little while until we're sure that the risk has passed. So I'm happy to answer any questions. As I say, we'll be communicating more broadly with all of our staff after this meeting today. But I wanted you to be aware, and again, we continue to point to Gray-Bruce Public Health, as well as the provincial and federal governments as the authority on these decisions and what the situation is. Marlene McLavy did send a message out to all of your municipalities today. The Provincial Emergency Operations Center has also asked to collect information regarding any issues related to COVID-18 that people are struggling with, that they are going to step up and kind of be the central repository for those issues, and then, I think, work with us to try and find resolution to those things, whatever they may be. So Marlene is required now to provide a daily response to the PIAC, and where there's information from your individual municipalities, we'll move that forward for them.
Thanks, Madam CEO. I noticed there was, when you entered this building, there was some publication on the door giving some instructions there. Any question or clarity from county councils to the CEO? Counselor Mellon?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I certainly support any efforts the CEO and other staff are doing to minimize transmission. The only thing I would ask is, please make sure that council is aware of what actions senior staff have done so that we're aware of what's going on, even Marlene's transmission to the lower tiers. I wasn't aware of that until right now. Not that I need to know, but I'd certainly like to know. So if we get questions, we're able to address them. Thank you.
Madam CEO?
We did earlier this week have a meeting that involved, you remember municipalities, as well as a number of other stakeholders, just about pandemic planning. Because it's been 10 years, more than 10 years, since people have had to really focus on their pandemic plans in any kind of a meaningful way. So I hope that that information session was useful for people to try and get them through that. I will, I also received from, we have a neg-